I will now call this meeting to order. I will start with the flag student, Mr. Martin.
I pledge allegiance to the law, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoops, that's better. The New Jersey Open Public Education Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of any intent to media public eyes in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or to be acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Meltown Local Education is called noticeless meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there are posted in the Meltown Municipal School building. Joyce Koller and Arcey Phillips and the Star Ledger, Orange Engineering, and the Senate English Studios. The Meltown School is restricted to collaboration with family and community. It is committed to academic excellence for all students. We aspire to develop confident lifelong leaders who will succeed in a diverse and changeable world. Alright, then how the role of all? Jason Biss?
Here.
Mrs. Barr, Mrs. Tanza?
Here.
Jackie Chalada?
Here.
Mr. Bill from Scabbage?
Here.
Nikki Harley?
Here.
This next Alexis Harley?
Here.
Louis Backer?
Here.
Mrs. Philo?
Here.
Maria Dizel?
Here.
Johan Demetrio?
Here.
Kate Crabb?
Here.
Mr. Fulebe?
Navrana?
Here.
Madoj Wansawoski?
Here.
Don Milverin?
Here.
Jacob Tracy?
Here.
Mr. Phil from Palatino?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Here.
Alright, the Meltown Local Education Law comes with Joyce Koller School eighth grade district government resents under direction of advisor, Mr. Eric Seale. Still in school, the Meltown's Board of Education. Knowing the hard work and dedication of the Jersey's Local Board of Education leaders, Governor Christopher Christie claimed January 2012 as school board recognition of the New Jersey. Certificates on the rise, the board recognizes recognition. Whereas, the Jersey School Boards Association and the National School Boards Association have declared January 2012 to the school board recognition. Time of all presidents by acknowledged contributions paid by our local school board members. And whereas, Meltown Board of Education is one of 587 local school boards in New Jersey that set policy and oversees operations of public school districts. And whereas, Meltown Board of Education embraces the goal of a high quality education for all New Jersey public schools. And whereas, the Jersey Local School Boards help determine the community goals in the education of 1.4 million children, pre-kinetic, and adult children. And whereas, the Jersey's 4,800 local school board members receive no recognition for their services, acts, advocacy for public school students, as they work with administrators to achieve endearment and betterment of public education. And whereas, school board staff provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those of special needs. And whereas, Board of Education provides accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school districts to help them. And they convey to school administrators the public expectations of the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in these schools, which rank among the nation's best as indicators such as high school graduation rates, class size, college admissions, and competition, and advanced places offered as test scores. Now therefore, being resolved, the Meltown Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as a joint community statewide, considering January 2012 as school board recognition. And being further resolved, if the Meltown Board of Education refers all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education in a couple of school stacks for the improvement of our children's education.
Colleen Riley, Eric Agda, Jenna Hurley, Michael Turek, Gregory Welsh, Spalsa Rock, Andrew Cotto, and Jason Biss representing Mrs. Tanza, Jackie Chalada representing Mr. Bill from Scabbage, Nikki Harley representing Mrs. Alexis Harley, Louis Backer representing Mrs. Philo, Maria Dizel representing Mrs. Johan Demetrio, Caitlin Crabb representing Mr. Fulebe, Navrana, Zobon Wansawoski representing Mrs. Don Milverin, Jacob Tracy representing Mr. Phil from Palatino, and Hannah Lee representing Mrs. Trish Payne. Please join us to congratulate all the board members for the non-New Jersey experience.
Soon as killing. Alright, time for the legislative reports. Mr. Terrence Wood?
Facilities.
Give him the mic. Can't hear him.
Facilities, there is a computer and phone system managed on January 7th due to the faulty server switching port. Mr. Steve Agda, who trained his hardware, was able to get all systems running by natural means. We appreciate everyone's patience for the backlog of pending technology requests while Mr. Agda reprioritizes his critical due diligence. To know, Mr. Agda's responsibilities include managing over 300 computers and printers, little servers, copiers, and other hardware devices, while managing between 700 to 800 user lines. Mr. Agda's work is of critical importance to support the ever-growing needs of the district. To give an update on insurance claims made as a result of her campaign, today the district receives notification of approval for one of our project applications to be reimbursed. The district will receive non-revenue of $37, which represents a scheme of 75% reimbursement of $1,250 in claim for insurance reimbursement services. Initially, initially, a claim is filled through our insurance carrier, NJSPAIG, for over $7,480. Our insurance broker has recently communicated that we can expect an actual payment of $2,488 after accounting for $5,000 of fiscal. We anticipate seeing more guidance related to the governor signing into S3140, which allows the school board levels to be moved to November. Mr. Marasco has emailed the board basic information from NJAASPO, who are the legal as well as simple draft language for such information. Orders may have to make this decision by February 11th due to election step to studies. Due to recent banking radiations and marketplace conditions, DDME has informed business administrator of the need to consider implementing an additional investment account in which to earn interest. Since DDME has changed its relationship relationship to a compensating balance model which allows Meltown to offset monthly fees, while does not allow Meltown's current accounts to earn interest at 30% first of the year, the opening of such investment account would allow moving of investable balances from non-invested current accounts to the account currently fixed rate of 25% first of the year. The NJ Department of Education will be moving away from its DOE-based budget software to be to a web-based platform in the future. It is possible this change will occur for the 2013-2014 budget year. The DOE is currently in talks with various software vendors to discuss system compatibility and other issues of implementation. This change may require the need to evaluate current and end software dissonance functionally with changes that signal transportation. There have been several reasons of certain bustards being late. Proper notification and documentation of issues have been maintained to be Meltown and Meltown Regional Association Services Commission. Realty warnings and fines to certain companies. Arrangements are being made to coordinate with the key personnel from responsible MRAS, and specific bossing parameters and good faith, stuffs, transportation, and so on. That concludes my report.
Thank you for the report, Michael. Now to the secret agenda support, Mr. Agda.
Artistic audition, the vision is explored by the videos of the video meetings just as Mr. I. Rader is doing tonight. The videos can be accessed from a website and any of the residents to the board of education meetings. The video will be created with one of our webcams and uploaded to show the essence of your service. As we move forward with this process, we will notify parents via P.E. Glass and homework with Mr. I. Rader to put a notice on the local cable channel so that all interested residents and parents have access to meetings to be informed of. This is one of the district's district's strategic plan initiatives in an effort to meet the goal of sharing and communication with the public. I want to remind all parents that our report cards are now online and can be accessed by signing onto the parent portal and follow the login prompts. Once logged in, your report cards will be viewed and ordered. If parents are worried about difficulty with the parent portal, we have set up help desk where this is available at 732-204-2361, or email. The next five district meetings between Meltown Board of Education and the Solskell Board of Education is scheduled for February 7th and 2012 at Solskell. That concludes my report.
And if you know the Parfue Principal's Report, Mr. Dedet.
Our new school's first graders will participate in a new program initiative that is being coordinated with the principal of these practical educational and technical high school, Mr. Bisco and Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. The program involves eighteen passengers who will come to teach a short lesson to the first graders four times per year about how to be safe. We are happy to work with the GOJF students on this support project. Student of the month will be held for January at Cardiocardic Center. The criteria for the disruption, including a significant improvement in a subject being all around grade A, which means doing well still in all areas, or going above and beyond to assist someone else. Congratulations to all students of the month, past and future. That concludes my report.
Alright, and now to the Joyce Koller's Principal's Report, Mr. Hurley.
Joyce Koller Schools' board request announced that the 32nd seventh annual student was selected to be published in an anthology, "Bolgey". Congratulations to Mrs. Gerhardt as well as all of our boardees. Keep up the great work. Joyce Koller students were excited to have a special guest chef visit during lunchtime on January 17th. Pasta joke with fresh pasta from the streets as they ate lunch and deserve pasta joke's demonstration. Thanks to Paul Tullie, Joyce Koller students have several specialty lunches and various chefs to write demonstrations throughout the year. Joyce Koller Schools, these schools, Suits School Junior will be presented at Joyce Koller School on January 26th, 27th, and 28th. Our director, Mrs. Emily Rosenthal, and assistant director, Mrs. Kristen Hurwitz, will have worked diligently with the Suits School Junior class to prepare this fun and entertaining show. You are all invited and we look forward to seeing you at our Suits School Junior performance. The eighth grade students and Mrs. Gerhardt will be distributing carnations for Valentine's Day as fundraiser. Forms will be sent home asking parents that they are interested in sending their child to a teacher, a red, white, or pink carnation for Valentine's Day for a $2 donation. Personalized notes will be attached to each carnation and delivered on February 14th wishing recipient a happy Valentine's Day. That concludes my report.
I very much now to the Director's Report, Mr. Welsh.
As school security? As school security, the people have actually decided scheduled, it was beginning January 26th, 2012, at Joyce Koller High School. Non-annual at Joyce Koller, and 2pm at Koller. And attendance will be Chief Geico, Dr. Madison, Mrs. Philo, Mr. Angelina, Mrs. Sizer, Mr. Ryan, Mrs. Chatsworth, Mrs. Glassell, and Mrs. Johnson. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Now to our Principal's Board, Mr. Flann.
The annual needs assessment survey is posted on the district website and will assist in prioritizing programs and professional development for the 2012-2013 school year. The district's new current parent portal, which currently allows parents to view report cards online, will be expanded during the very marketing period to include a great book feature for Joyce Koller students. This feature will allow parents to view those on card assignments and the partners' reports online. The district is in the process of applying to be an ETS test center site. This authorization will allow individuals to register to take the SAT at Joyce Koller's school. The district's curriculum compacting initiative is approaching the final circle of implementation. The final parent meeting will be scheduled for later this month. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now to our Educational Facilities Manager, Mr. Cottle.
It was reported, it was reported at the recent safety committee meeting that both playgrounds were expected as the regular practice. It was found that part of the parfue playground had shown normal wear and that part of the playground had been worn beyond repair that had been removed. The playground place could not be restored once removed. It is something that the board needs to be aware of for planning purposes that the Parfue playground might have to be replaced in the next budget year. That concludes my report.
Okay, we'll now head to the Liaison Board, Mr. Stavros Plashman, this party.
Governor Christie has just signed into law a widely debated school election bill, S3148, which gives local communities the option to move their school board elections to November. This new law has a significant potential impact on schools. First, the school board elections will only take place on April, apart from the general municipal election. Even more importantly, if the community does opt to move their school election date to November, as proposed school budget law act or the law of 2% tax level cap, the need for the top for other load on the school budget is eliminated. This is a very attractive option for a fiscally responsible district such as Meltown, where our values have always been at or even below the cap. Under the legislation, there are three ways the community can move the school election date. Resolution by the Board of Education, resolution by the municipal, municipal governing body in Meltown, this will be a town council, or public question presented to voters in November. At this time, there are many amendments in the bill that are still unclear. We are waiting for other rights to the state concerning implementation of the statute. When where amendment becomes a bill, the Meltown Board of Education will consider whether or not to pass a resolution to change our own school election date to November. Another bill that was recently signed into law by Governor Christie is the Urban Home Act. This bill allows private companies to manage public schools in the district and continue upon approval of the local school boards. This law does not affect the South. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now to the Meltown Council, this Crabb.
Councilman Wilson spoke briefly about the recent legislation by Governor Christie signed into law, which allows school boards to move the annual school elections to November, and how the council should discuss the ramifications of this new law. Councilman Wilson asked Borough Clerk Michael Chancellor to draft the resolution and suggest Mr. [inaudible] defer that decision to Peter Villolo, the Borough Attorney, assuming the law is in the process of reviewing all of the material of this newly passed legislation, but will respond with an answer in time for the council meeting. Councilman Williams, the schooling board liaison, also spoke briefly about the minutes shared and ideas for resolutions for resolutions with Dr. Madison, as the school board would also be dropped from the resolution in response to the new law being passed. Alan Giver spoke about the safety first of school to school board and that I will, well, which she discussed by representation that he gave at the last school board meeting on January 10th, 2012. Councilman Williams read aloud during the council meeting the winner of the Junior League spelling game. Mother Metalila, a JK eighth grader, along with all the other names of the spelling participants, and grandfather of her job, Good Walter. For a good job, Walter. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And now to the Middlesex Regional Exhibition Services Commission, Mr. Chalada.
The MYSD Board of Correctives met on Friday, June 20th, 2012, at the very beginning of Sunday's Saturday. The board voted on a number of items, including supplemental amendments which will expand the public pricing program for children. Presently includes over 530 school districts and a few municipalities members. I may remember our district states thousands of dollars of library to private school services. The Middlesex County can and will at this state as a result of former residents of all 21 counties throughout the state. The commission said it will continue to provide quality education for many of the state's special needs students. It provides these services that cost between $10,000 to $50,000 to be addressed to access the best support for private schools. The newest commission of school descending, the Center for Life Long Living, has recently been awarded platinum leadership and energy and environmental design certification and has been used for many years without platinum status. The Center for Life Long Living is well-served and covered and includes David V. T. K. and food, etc. And if in the second year, if I had specialized classroom provision to approximately 100 centers to aid all those with multiple disabilities, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now to the Meltown Education Foundation, Mr. Miss, one of those people.
Any appeal letters are being sent over to 2,000 residents, businesses, and alumni. Thanks to Ray Moore, who is Chair General Assistant, sent letters out through bulk mail and cost. We'd like to extend our sympathies to MDF co-president Pam Strong and her family over the loss of her mother and Meltown resident, Karen Kennedy. The Meltown Education Foundation is searching for new trustees and clients. Anyone who is interested to attend the new next MDF meeting on Monday evening, January 30th, 2012, at 7pm at Joyce Koller Media Center, or contact MDF trustee's school principal or superintendent who will express interest. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now to the Meltown Parent Teachers Association, this is all.
The PTA executive committee met on January 18th. They have some leftover money from the Scholastic book sale that took place in September. The principals will look into what types of books and materials from Scholastic will be most beneficial to the respective schools. Another book fair is scheduled for February. There are two fundraisers coming up. The first is a new one from the Muscle Make a Grill in North Vancouver. The PTA will be selling $5 gift cards and the owner will donate $2 back for every $5 sold. The other fundraiser is the Otis Fund. The PTA is looking for ideas for a big fundraiser for next year. Parfue needs a playground program. The February General PTA meeting will have JK student ambassadors who will just challenge as guest speakers. They will share all that has happened in the schools since having the assembly. That concludes my report.
And thank you. And now to the National New Jersey Middlesex County School Board Association, Mr. Tracy.
New Jersey School Boards Association. NJSPA's 2012 candidate kit is now available online. NJSPA is host of the 2012 candidate kit online at www njspagodbook/candies. This year's annual school election will be held April 17th if the board does not pass a resolution to move it to November. And the deadline for candidates to submit their nominating petition is 4pm, February 27th, 2012. However, please note that the PL 2011 CTO2, signed by Governor Christie on January 27th, gives communities the option to change the date of annual school board member election to November. So if this is a new issue that has been addressed here in Meltown, please check the school board office to confirm the date of 2012 annual school election. Just a reminder, check some of the resources on the NJSPA website such as GLFMJ, the mission of the Educational Leadership Foundation of New Jersey, and that's the public education government's training research and training grants to further professional development. Also look at blog talk, radio conversation on New Jersey education. The recent segment is moving the school election to November, right for your district, air on January 13th. If you didn't get a chance to hear, an archive copy is available on the website. Middlesex County School Boards Association. Just a reminder, the Middlesex County SPA two meeting will be held this Thursday, January 26th at 7pm. Registration is at 6:30. The topic is the Board's role in achievement. It will be held on the touch of ice, won't be easy. The MCSPA's student recognition program will be held on March 7th at 7pm. The location is yet to be determined. The MCSPA annual spirit meeting will be held on May 3rd at 7pm. The location is not yet determined. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now to the Solskell Public Schools Board of Education, with Mr. Agda.
At the meeting on January 17th, teachers and principals presented two programs available to their fifth to the fifth grade students. One is a drama class and the other is a public speaking class. One of the initiatives is in this class is six speeches in 60 days, which involves the fifth graders doing a speech on introducing the topic of how to, how to do something and entertain a speech persuasive, informative, and impromptu speech. The goal is to assist the students in an early age to feel confident in public speaking. According to the board, we provide an update before before courses being added to the high school program. Career exploration will involve virtual business. The goal is to provide to provide career readiness, translation programming, college search, and applications to colleges. Through the nominate program, a fourth, a fourth year math will be added, algebraic systems, college preparatory, more colleges are providing fourth year math, and this will provide additional opportunities for students who do not want to take calculus. Also add a word advanced placement environmental science and advanced placement human geography. That concludes my report.
Hey, at this time, we will listen to committee chairperson's report. Please send instruction with Mr. Chalada.
At the last term of the committee meeting, one of the committee members expressed concern that when they were in the classroom, they were driving math to hold up. Today's global community, we cannot afford to rely on geography. Mrs. Grant, according to your session, check that. The reason for back hold was for the installation of smart boards and their present A B C. However, according to Mrs. Grant, she has to track back the geography program. In that examination, she assumes that it's gone to be appropriate to enhance the sixth grade world history program of that Mrs. on geography. So the district has purchased a complete supplemental program by the initial in the area geography. In addition, the class will have geography as an elective activity for such a strategy. In line for geography, we've continued to place increased standards to separate and introduce to your portfolios. The staff have taken up special consulting to ensure the success of this program. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. And now to the Finances and Facilities Committee, Mr. Dan.
The Finance and Services Committee is charged with responsibility to oversee district-wide financials. Recomended regulatory proposal will be involved discussing a planning of construction projects and identifying funding sources. On January 17th, there was a district-wide computer and phone outage and one of the issues that is too late, too great, too late is the fact that we're all spending our resources due to an increase in technology components as well as an increase in gain because of the educational advance. Upon recommendation by the business administrator to the superintendent, I request that the Finance and Services Committee schedule a meeting to begin to address these concerns as we prepare for the next year budget. This is a good time for us to have free and limited conversations in all the aspects of the district as we start our work of putting together next year budget. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And now, the grants with Ms. Harley.
New Jersey has been selected as one of the winners of the third best in the top grant competition and will receive 38 million dollars in federal funds. Half of the money will be distributed to districts and half will be used at the state level to support its education reform agenda. As part of its best of the top application, New Jersey proposed four objectives. Developing the models and curriculum of assessments for all four contexts subject areas. Developing and launching an online instructional improvement system to support the model curriculum assessments and instructional tools. Implementing a teacher evaluation pilot program and creating a principal evaluation pilot program. Strengthening the department's charter for authorizing practices. Any district of the state will have the ability to sign up and to participate in the risk of top priority. Later this time, the New Jersey Department of Education will provide details on the process for districts to participate. The grants committee will be looking for this information and will then report the administration to determine how it can apply. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And now, the H.I.V., with Ms. Taylor.
A conversation was held with NJSPA representative Gwen Thornton in regards to boards' role in H.I.V. incidents. Boards can change this set policy in regards to consequences or leading to the principals/ superintendent to oversee. This was discussed in committee, but is recommended to be discussed by the whole board, board of ed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And now, the negotiations with Ms. Teresa.
No report at this time.
All right. And then, personal management, back to Ms. Teresa.
No report at this time.
Okay. Public relations, Ms. One of those people.
The five district meeting between the Scottsdale and Melton Board of Education will be held in Scottsdale High School Media Center at 7:00 p.m. on February 7th. All are invited to attend. Formal action may be taking at this meeting. A law enabled school board elections to be held in November, signed into law by Governor Christie this week. School districts will decide if they would like to take advantage of this opportunity. That concludes my report.
Uh, thank you. And now, the strategic planning, Ms. Harley.
The strategic planning committee met on Tuesday and proposed the actions identified for each of the four schools of our districts to treat the threat. It determined that despite the financial constraints of the previous few years, almost all the actions have been completed or are still on track for completion in accordance with the plan. Some of the remaining actions involve around the districts having a wider public average. The committee will meet in a lunch. That concludes my report.
Okay. At this time, it is the public now just to report comments specific to the negotiations only. Please hand the microphone and state your name and address and records. If there are no further comments, we move on to the superintendent's recommendations. Recommended discussion, Ms. Leder.
Recommended discussions of our school board is that I agree with your discussion overall.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the board of commissioners.
Teresa.
Give him the mic.
Yes.
Hello, come in here. Nikki Harley.
Aye.
Danai.
Louis Becker.
Yes.
Here you go. Zoe Wannalowski.
Yes.
Jacob Tracy.
Yes.
Daniel Lee.
Yes.
Katie Craft.
Aye.
Jackie Shalit. Jason S.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. All right. And now, the financing facilities, Ms. Leder. Recommended motions and recommendations as outlined in the financing facilities, we will work through them. Can I have a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call? Beri Ezeo.
Yes.
Nikki Harley.
Yes.
Louis Becker.
Yes.
Zoe Wannalowski.
Yes.
Jacob Tracy.
Yes.
Daniel Lee.
Yes.
Katie Craft.
Yes.
Jackie Shalit.
Yes.
Jason S.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay.
Aluna. Okay. And now, move on to personal management. Uh, Ms. Taylor.
Recommended motions and resolutions as outlined in personal management number 137.
Can I have a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, okay. The board of commissioners. Beri Ezeo.
Yes.
Nikki Harley.
Yes.
Louis Becker.
Aye.
Zoe Wannalowski.
Yes.
Jacob Tracy.
Yes.
Daniel Lee.
Aye.
Katie Craft.
Aye.
Jackie Shalit.
Yes.
Jason S.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. And now, the public relations, Ms. One of those people.
Recommended motions and resolutions as outlined in public relations number 1.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, the board of commissioners. Beri Ezeo.
Yes.
Nikki Harley.
Aye.
Louis Becker.
Aye.
Zoe Wannalowski.
Yes.
Jacob Tracy.
Yes.
Daniel Lee.
Yes.
Katie Craft.
Aye.
Jackie Shalit.
Yes.
Jason S.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. At this time, the public can now make comments about anything they choose. Please look forward to the state and chairman of administration's board record.
You got it, Mike. Let me get the mic.
Please, the Jersey's members and the New Jersey's. I would like to provide assistance with the board parent board. We have an email address set up specifically to field questions about the portal. Parents can send their questions to mms.com or call our dedicated app and email message at 732-204236.
Okay. And there are no further comments. We move on to Ms. Taylor. Okay. And Ms. Teresa, Beri Ezeo.
Yes, I'd like to thank the youth and government participants. They did a wonderful job. And I'd like to welcome Jennifer Lopez for our staff. I'm sure she'll do a wonderful job. And I'd like to thank Steve Vogel for his hard work with all the technology.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Ms. Harley and Nikki Harley.
Um, I'd like to thank all the students for participating tonight. I think everybody did a great job. And thanks to Mr. Russ Eisner for filling in for us.
Use the microphone. Good job, kids.
Okay, uh...
Who's next?
Okay. Uh, now, to Ms. Taylor and Louis Becker.
I also would like to thank Louis Becker for the excellent job. And then, additions to Ryan Rider. And now, Mr. Siegel will be leaving the board next morning. Thank you.
All right. And now, to Ms. Gilbert and Zoe Wannalowski.
Congratulations to Mr. Siegel and the students who reviewed the document. And to the students, thank you for coming over here who could have participated. And I'd also like to congratulate the students from the coach who made all the attempts. And of course, Ryan Rider is now applauding you. Thank you.
Glad you were at Austin.
Okay. Now, Mr. Paul DeElo and Ms. Teresa.
Just another round of thanks to everyone who participated and the students and Ms. Siegel. Uh, thank you. Uh, I think you're doing a great job. And, uh, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hay and Daniel Lee.
I would like to thank Mr. Siegel and the eighth grade class. How is it, Ben?
Okay. Now, to Ms. Emily and Katie Craft.
Uh, congratulations to the eighth grade students, Mr. Siegel, on a great job. Us, as always, thank you very much, Ben. That concludes my report.
Okay. And to Bill and Scott, to Ms. Leder.
I'd like to say thank you particularly to Mr. Siegel for providing the aid to the students for this program. Jack, you're doing a wonderful job representing for all the youth and government participants. Uh, I would also like to thank everybody else that was standing at this particular time.
And a little word from Ms. Pete Tantin.
How about the other Pete Tantin?
I'd like to thank all of our youth and government participants. Um, they all did a great job. I'm very proud of all of you. Um, I'd also like to thank all of our eighth graders that were in the audience today because you were very good and considerably inspired here. So I thank you very much for that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Siegel for leading the charge here. He did an excellent job. And to Ryan Rider for coming out and going for us again. It's always a pleasure to have you. Although that being said, one of the best pleasures of this whole evening is that we all had an opportunity to spend it with you. What we do up here, we do for all of the students. And it's just a pleasure to actually get to spend some time with you and happy times we had. So it was a great pleasure having you tonight. Thank you.
And on behalf of the eighth grade classes 2011 to 2012, I just have to say thank you to the board members and to the school officials. This was a wonderful time. I'm sure we all enjoyed it. And also, thanks to the eighth graders, uh, thanks for listening. We'll be sure to do the same this upcoming year.
All right. And now, to the official members. I need a motion to accept all the help we have just done here tonight, um, by the students, county executive board. Some of that motion?
Some.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Have a roll call, please.
Joanne Demetria.
Aye.
Alexis Harley.
Yes.
Linda Harold.
Aye.
John Wilbur.
Aye.
Philip Palladino.
Yes.
Patricia Payne.
Yes.
Louie Zambrana.
Aye.
Bill Pitt Scavitch.
Aye.
And Barbara Fertan.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, we're going to be having an executive session meeting tomorrow. So we need to approve the executive session pursuant to chapter 2, 31, P.L. 1675, as to whether this bill is in public media or otherwise in public body to lead an executive private session under certain circumstances. And so, all requires a voided resolution at public meeting or completing sessions that may require a session. The Melton Board of Education, the Board of Directors, determines that this is the second meeting's executive session on January 24th, 2012, to discuss matters involving personnel and legal matters. And that the matters discussed will be made public if the way of confidentiality is the rule required. And that motion?
So. Second.
Now, I have a motion to adjourn for my group.
So.
Second.
All right, Ms. Taylor. Aye.